I'd like to welcome everybody for being here today for this momentous occasion of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach potentially coming to a cooperative position on the airport issue, and I believe we probably will prevail today. If everybody would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call for Newport Beach, please.
The record will reflect that all members of the Newport Beach City Council are present.
Hey, we have the roll call for Costa Mesa, please.
Let the record reflect that all council members for the City of Costa Mesa are present.
With the exception of Voodoo Dixon.
I'm sorry, except for Member Dixon.
Thank you. Yourself?
Mayor Beaver, members of the Costa Mesa City Council, thank you very much for having us here today. I hope I'm not overstating this by saying this is somewhat of a historic event. I think this is the first time that our two city councils have met. Councilman Webb, do you ever recall the two city councils meeting? You've been around longer than anybody.
Maybe thirty, forty years ago. Probably in a bar somewhere.
Anyway, longer than our history is. But it certainly is, I think, a historic event. I think we have a lot of common issues between our two cities. Our problems don't stop at our city boundaries. We have things that go from one city into the other. In addition to the airport area, which we're going to be talking about today, and it's really the primary purpose of getting together, we have issues such as traffic and circulation, our street systems, so we certainly have to work together on those. Land use, banning ranch, of course, as well as a lot of the smaller projects that come up in each of our cities that have an effect on our respective adjacent jurisdiction. We have issues with water quality and dealing with runoff, concerns both of us. Certainly parks and recreation. Recreation facilities for our youth is important. Financial health of our city. It's good for Newport Beach, for Costa Mesa to be financially healthy as well as the other way around. And then, of course, education. We both share the same unified school district, so that's an important area for us. I've had the opportunity over the last year to work with Mayor Beaver, and I have found it to be an extremely good relationship. We've found that we've had many things in common. We've discussed problems that our cities have mutually, and it really has been a pleasure to work with Eric as well as meeting and working with Alan Roder. And Eric and I have expressed a desire for the two cities to work together and come to some common solutions on common problems. So I'm looking forward to this being the first of many future meetings, and I hope that we have accomplishments that result from these meetings that will benefit both cities.
Thank you, Ed. And I would have to concur with those points. It has been a pleasure working with you and trying to lay some groundwork so that our councils can get together and resolve some of the issues that are shared. In our discussions, we both agreed that we would get a lot farther along working together on these issues, and we have worked cooperatively. We've taken a few stabs at some recreation initiatives, and I think we're moving forward on that. It's great that here just toward the end of the year, we're now sitting down to formalize our relationship and our effort to contain John Wayne and the quality of life issues that both cities face and endure on a daily basis. This meeting has been a long time coming, and I appreciate everyone's hard work in getting us here. Certainly, I would like to thank the Mayor Selig and his council for joining us today, his city manager and staff for working so closely with Alan Roder, and our staff. I'd like to thank the Costa Mesa Council for joining us as well, and certainly the public for joining us. We need to unite, and I think that by doing this, we will have a strong position in containing and keeping the wolf at bay, if you will, keeping him out of the gate. Wait a minute, that's 10.8. Okay. Like other transportation issues that present challenges to both our communities, air traffic and the operation of John Wayne Airport is one that we really need to work together on. I doubt very much that it can be successfully addressed strictly by any one city, by the County of Orange, or even by the FAA, but it's certainly, it's a certainty that it won't be addressed positively if we don't find a way to work together. Today certainly isn't the start of anything. We've worked on airport issues together before. It's not the end of anything either, because this is going to be in front of us for a long time, as long as John Wayne Airport is in existence. But it is another important part of the process as we lay out how our two communities are going to work together in the future on airport issues. With that, we will move on with the agenda. We have discussion item one, that's a presentation on the Go Local program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayors and city council members. Let me just say on behalf of both city manager Blue Down and myself how much we appreciate your councils coming together on this, developing a commonality of interest, something that I think we have been able to accomplish with our respective staff, with groups in the communities, and I think it's really important that we have that continuity from the top because that's where it all starts. That's where we get our direction, and that's what's key in executing a successful program. We do have as item number one, discussion on your agenda, presentation on the Go Local program. As all of you will recall, shortly after the first of the year, there was a program put forth by the Orange County Transportation Authority that allowed each city in Orange County to make application to look at different opportunities for linking their communities in with MetroLink service in Orange County. City of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, I think, both independently looked at some different options, perhaps with pairing up with other communities, and ultimately came together with a proposal focused on this mutual interest of how do we link rail transportation with air transportation. We went forth, there was action by both bodies to approve agreements with OCTA and with one another in the execution of that contract, and as a consequence, we received $200,000 in OCTA grant funds. Today is a result of that study and analysis, and we have Peggy Ducey of Peggy Ducey and Associates and her subconsultants here to make the presentation on the results of that study. I think this is perhaps not everything we were hoping for. We were looking for that silver bullet that said, boy, you know, here's where to get your ticket to Ontario. I think we're a little bit short of that at this point, but I think there's some extremely valuable information in here for all of us. So with that, I'd like to refer to Peggy and her staff.
Thank you, Alan, and thank you, mayors and members of the city council. I'm happy to be here. It's nice to be back in Costa Mesa near Newport Beach. Some of you already know that I was the deputy city manager of Newport Beach until about eight years ago when I moved into private consulting on airports of all issues. And it was, I think, my experience with the El Toro project, where I worked in Newport Beach and absolutely supported a new airport at El Toro and lived in Laguna Niguel and saw the opposition that I felt that there was a better way, that we might be able to approach airport siting and how to meet our aviation demand. So I'm happy to be back here, and this study, I think, is going to help us get a better idea on how do we move forward on this regionalization issue. So as the city manager mentioned, we are going to give the findings for this Go Local scope of work in the report. And what OCTA asks us to do is take a look at transit links into John Wayne Airport. And they wanted us to specifically evaluate services that OCTA either was going to be operating or planned to be operating into John Wayne. So they wanted us to look at it into the context of the MetroLink expansion wherein the next few years we'll be going to service every half hour. They also wanted us to look at the Eye Shuttle, which is operated by the City of Irvine and goes from the Tustin MetroLink station into John Wayne Airport. The Eye Shuttle had been operating for about a week or two when we actually started the work. They wanted us to look at previous rail studies into JWA and look at the potential for rail into John Wayne Airport, and then compare the transit connections from the Irvine Station into John Wayne and the Tustin Station into John Wayne. But the other thing that we're going to provide today is kind of a short, a small snapshot of where we see some opportunities for the future aviation demand in Orange County and how we might be able to start to approach that. And why would we want to look at transit issues, transit links into John Wayne? After airport, air carrier noise and operations, traffic congestion is often the number-two complaint. And it's because it generates traffic, and you have congested intersections around the airport, but it also impacts air quality. And so that's why it's critical. When you look at other transit links at other airports throughout the nation, you often find that they really don't produce the ridership that was expected. So it was our position that before we did any kind of ridership estimates, we had to look very carefully at the John Wayne Airport passenger market. We had to detail who they were, why they were coming here, what was motivating them to make certain decisions, especially on ground transportation. And then, once we gathered that data, analyzed it and understand it, start to look at where the opportunities were, and then evaluate the transit services into the airport, and then ultimately market it in a way that produces the ridership you need. Oftentimes, cities or airports choose a transit mode, whether it's rail or bus transit, and then try and fit the passenger into that mode. We believe you have to do it the other way around. You have to know your passenger, know what those needs are, and then choose your mode based on your passenger market. When we originally began this study, we intended to use existing passenger data from the last passenger survey that John Wayne Airport did. That passenger survey focuses more on customer satisfaction. They do 500 intercept surveys and then a telephone survey of 1,500 residents. Once we got into that data, we believed that there just wasn't complete enough for us to do the kind of analysis we needed. We came to an agreement with the city managers as well as John Wayne Airport that we would redo the passenger survey, and the consultant team agreed to redo that survey at no additional cost to the city. So we gleaned some really good information. I'm going to turn the presentation now over to Jill Brifett with Lander and Brown, and he'll review that information that we got from the passenger survey.
Thanks, Peggy. Thanks, everyone. I'm delighted to be here today to present this information. As Peggy said, one of the key things as you're evaluating transit options into airports is really to have a good understanding of who the passenger market is, who are the people that are using the airport, where do they come from, and how do they get there. And what I'm going to go over with you guys right now is just who the passengers are and look at the characteristics that may build a basis for some transit into John Wayne. So we conducted the survey in the June-July timeframe, so the data that you're seeing is broadly representative of kind of a summer period. So this may change over the course of the year, but, you know, it's in a margin of error, most likely. The first thing that we typically look at when evaluating transit into airports is the primary trip purpose. Business travelers, for example, have different needs than leisure travelers, who are more price-sensitive and more likely to use transit options. Business travelers really value time over cost, and our survey substantiated that. So at John Wayne, we do have a predominantly leisure market, which is about 55 percent, and over half of those people are visiting friends and family. And one of the important things about visiting friends and family is that typically these passengers are being dropped off, they have access to private automobiles, and they're actually creating two times the trips for every trip to the airport because there's a return lag. We have, even though leisure is a dominant segment, we have a very high business base in comparison with other airports in the U.S. And from a demographic perspective, we really have an airport user that is relatively high income, and it's very different from the broader county-level medians and even U.S. medians. So we really have a passenger base that values time more so than they do perhaps the price of the trip to the airport. So that's important when we're evaluating transit. Another key component is whether or not you're a resident here or you're a visitor. One, because typically local knowledge, that helps promote ridership. If you're a visitor, on the flip side, you typically are looking at ways to get out of the airport. You don't have your own car, and you're looking for either a rental car, hotel shuttle, or something like that. So to a certain extent, it provides an audience for trying to take that trip that they might use today and putting it onto a mass transit option. We found that the airport also draws passengers, local passengers, but from outside the county, primarily Los Angeles and Riverside Counties, and the remaining 56 percent are visitors. So we have a relatively even split between the two passenger segments. This is where the people come from, and Peggy's going to talk about this in more detail later. This is really where the density clusters of the passengers that use the airport come from. And you can see that there are really five or six main cities. You have Anaheim, Santa Ana, Irvine, Tustin Beach, and then, of course, Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. And just sort of to give you a frame of reference, the airport has about 10 million passengers, and that equates to about 27,000 passengers every day that either come to this airport or depart from this airport. So it creates, as we'll see in the next slide, we have a very low occupancy way of getting to the airport, so we're creating a lot of vehicle trips to get there today. This is the same data, but it's just broken down by zip code. And again, it kind of defines some of the target areas that Peggy's going to talk about later. And here we have the Anaheim Disneyland Convention Resort, which is very important, and supporting hotels in Garden Grove. We have the business district in Irvine and clusters in Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. Now, these are very high-density areas, creating a lot of passengers, which Peggy will talk about, potential opportunities to specifically target these areas. So how do people get to the airport? Again, I think the overwhelming conclusion is it's a very low occupancy way of getting to the airport. People use private cars about 60 percent, and they typically are not parking. We have 40 percent that are dropped off, and what that does is it creates two times the vehicle trips, as that person is making a return journey home. So we have 18 percent that actually park. So we really, by comparison to some other airports, this is quite a low statistic, and we think part of that is due to the proximity that a lot of passengers are coming from to John Wayne, and it's a very easy drop-off point for people. When you look at residents only, 85 percent come to the airport in their car. And so we have a very high use of private car by the local population. So again, you know, we're really building this picture that we have a very low occupancy mode to get into the airport today. Visitor business travels, their primary mode of transportation is rental car. And like I said earlier, we have this 25 percent visiting friends and family component, and most of those people are dropped off at the airport, again, creating this two-times vehicle trips. One of the things that can be a concern with transit links into an airport is that they can basically lose parking revenue as a result because they provide another mode to get to the airport. But part of our study was to understand the demographic base and stratify the data, and we found that typically parkers, we asked some questions about their likelihood to use other forms of transportation. Parkers tend to be relatively high-income even against the airport base, and so we think there's a very negligible impact of any sort of parking revenue at the airport. The other component of our work was to understand where the employees come from in the county. And as you can see, it's a different picture. The very dense employment clusters are to the west and to the northwest of the airport, primarily in Santa Ana. We almost have a quarter of the airport employees that reside in Orange County coming from that area right outside the airport. And as you can see from the transit infrastructure that we're looking at evaluating, it aligns well with the BRT line that's probably going to be in place next year or 2010. So the one thing that is important is that employees are fundamentally different to airport passengers. There's less of a premium on time, there's more of a premium on cost. Air passengers, given the fact that they typically have encumbered with bags, they're already on long trips, they don't want to extend that trip, and so they're a very different market and should be targeted differently. So based on the survey, we look at evaluating transit ridership potential. Peggy kind of alluded to the things that we evaluated. We looked at the MetroLink line that runs through the county with the Eye Shuttle extension into John Wayne, and also basically a proxy for a rail extension. And we looked at the future OCTA Bravo services, and Peggy's going to talk more later about the direct services targeted to some of the high-density clusters that you saw on the map earlier. Our primary evaluation criteria for transit for airport passengers is really geographic eligibility, your demographic segmentation, which is some of the things we just talked about. And we asked passengers questions about transit preference. For example, would you use the Eye Shuttle for a future trip? If you had a choice between car and transit and various time and price levels, would you use a transit option versus your car, for example? So we were able to use the survey to come up with some ranges for transit ridership. So this is just a map that Peggy put together to, this is the future BRT line for the bus rapid, you're going to see on some of the maps. And so it's running down from Anaheim, Santa Ana, right to the airport, outside the airport. One of the things that I think is important about the proposed transit infrastructure is that it's not geographically eligible to all passengers. For example, you're not going to drive from a point closer to John Wayne to a transit stop, a MetroLink stop, or a BRT stop to access the airport. So part of our evaluation was to basically build a model that compared travel times to various options. And so what you see is basically a transit corridor for both MetroLink and a transit corridor for BRT. The MetroLink, just because of its scope, covers more of the passenger base. You basically cover almost half of the passenger base with the MetroLink line, whereas the BRT coverage is more diminished because it's just simply not as long, and it's more concentrated in the northwest part of the county. So you only cover 30 percent. But what's interesting, given the orientation of the employees in the county, is that the BRT line, actually, even though it has less scope, it actually covers a relatively similar proportion of the passenger, of the employee base. So you cover 40 percent in both options. We have a, people make decisions, and every decision, whether it's to fly, to drive, is based on time and cost, and, you know, depending on the segment, people evaluate those things differently. Based on our analysis, a rail option is basically going to extend travel times into John Wayne for passengers by about 60 percent. And the current pricing structure offers some advantages typically for communities that are further away, but in some of the closer-in communities, it actually doesn't right now, until you get to the point where you're buying just monthly discounted passes. When you get out to San Clemente, you're obviously looking at sort of transit in times of over an hour, buses, you know, maybe 40, 45-minute drive time. Some of the transit times when you're closer in are more manageable because they're still in the half-an-hour range, but they're always extended. So again, that's important to understand from a passenger perspective, as they're looking really at a time more so than cost. When we look at the BRT, again, there are fewer markets that it's going to cover, but we only get about 40 percent extended time versus driving, which the passengers is going to be beneficial. Really, it's more direct, it's a more direct service into John Wayne. And while there's no pricing, we kind of base some of our modeling on a pricing structure that's used for express buses, there are some more cost savings, it seems, with the bus. But again, the bus is only going to serve 30 percent of the passenger market. And again, kind of talking about the difference between edge passengers and employees, employees have the potential to enjoy benefits every day that they work. So they will make the savings on transit on a cumulative basis, so the benefits are much larger for employees, whereas an air passenger, on average at John Wayne, only travels five times a year, so that benefit over on an annual basis is much lower. And so again, when you think about planning trips over the course of a year, that benefit is less. So this is kind of how we looked at the ridership potential. It's based on the geographic market areas that we discussed for the BRT and MetroLink line, and it's based on the segmentation of the market, the passenger segments we discussed earlier, and based on stated preference in our survey, we use that to develop what pool of local passenger base may actually use a transit option into John Wayne. We felt it was prudent to develop a low through a high case. As Peggy said, public transit into airports, typically the level of John Wayne's that in terms of its passenger base is somewhere in the 5 to 8 percent range today. And so we developed three scenarios, basically that will give riderships between 500 and 2,000 passengers per day. And we did it for both the 10-mat case, which is kind of today's case, and then for basically when the airport reaches, it's half under the settlement agreement. So for the employees, we had less data for the employees, we didn't conduct a survey with airport employees, but there is some transportation research regarding employees' use of public transit modes into airports, and typically that ranges in the 2 to 5 percent range. We also looked at specific Orange County-level data, which today is about 3 percent for people using commuter public transit to get to their jobs every day. And one of the things that's interesting in some of the clusters where we see airport employees, they're also some of the higher commuter public transit cities and zip codes that are actually in the county. For example, Santa Ana is about 10 percent today. So that provides a range of about 40 to 500 daily trips that may go on a public transit mode into the airport, and so it ranges from a low of about 2 percent to a high case of about 10 percent that we feel is reasonable for kind of transit planning. So Peggy is now going to talk about some of the high-density clusters.
Just to recap a little bit, I do want to mention that we did a low, medium, and high base because so much is dependent on marketing. If you don't market your service, you simply build it, they're not going to come. As late as last week, I logged on to MetroLink, asked for directions into John Wayne Airport, got as far as the stations close to the airport, but didn't, was not then directed into the Eye Shuttle. So we have a low, medium, and high. The other thing I do want to mention is, when we segmented the market, we took a look at these four different segments because some we think are fairly inelastic, some are elastic. So when we talk about someone who's visiting family and friends, if your grandmother's coming to visit, you're not going to say, I'll meet you at the bus stop, Grandma, I'll just catch the flyer. So there's this emotional component. You're going to go pick up your friends and family at the airport, that's relatively inelastic. Business travel relatively inelastic because your employer is normally paying the cost of that. So that's how we kind of got a little more particular, a little more specific in trying to judge ridership on this. to judge ridership on this. So after taking a look at ridership, we looked, we went back and looked at densities. And as Dill mentioned earlier, we saw some pockets of dense concentration within the county that we thought provided some opportunities to take a look at. Oddly enough, all three of these areas pull about 14% of the JWA passengers. The Anaheim Resort area is actually 13.9. This area, Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, and Irvine, 13.9. And then South County is 14.1. All three, all total, those make up 42% of John Wayne passengers. And again, if you're targeting transit services and if you're targeting other kinds of airport issues, you want to focus on where the majority of your passengers are. And we have a very different mix. Anaheim and Garden Grove has more visitors. The John Wayne Airport, South Coast Metro, has more visitors, but vacation and convention travelers as well as business in South Orange County is kind of an eclectic mix. So let's go over each of these areas, and we're going to start first with Newport Beach, Irvine, and Costa Mesa. Large visitor component, there's about 2/3 of the passengers are visitors, 1/3 are residents. You have a strong business base. Most of your business base are people coming strictly for business, not for conventions or conferences. Though Costa Mesa does tend to have a higher percentage of convention goers, about 16% versus a 5% to 7% for Newport Beach and Irvine. Highly dependent on hotels for lodging. So when you see the actual percentage of visitors and then those visitors coming from hotels, it's fairly even. Once we took a look at the occupancy and the ground transportation mode, we looked at the private cars, those are those people that are coming in from visiting family and friends, rental cars are mostly business. But we took a look at these taxis and shared rides, and we looked at hotel shuttles. And what we found is in those three zip codes, you have between 20 and 25 large or medium-sized hotels. And many of them, most of them are running their own hotel shuttle service. Some are going every half hour into John Wayne, others you call and they come pick you up. So you have this constant rotation for each hotel of airport shuttles that come in and out every half hour. So if you want to begin to look at decreasing congestion and having a positive impact on air quality, you might want to take a look at a consolidated shuttle service. In just this small area around John Wayne Airport, you've got 15 hotels, all running their own shuttle service. And this little loop, depending on how you decide to travel it, is only three to five miles. So this is one of the ways that you can cut down on traffic congestion, do something for the hotels, it's going to save them a little bit more money, and have a more visitor-friendly type of environment. The next area we're going to look at is South County. And again, South County was different than all of the other places that we took a look at. There really is kind of a varying mix of resident travelers and visiting vacationers. On the coastal counties like Laguna Beach, you have a high visitor vacation population. In Aliso, it's almost to 80%. In Aliso Viejo, you have 80% residents. So you really have kind of a mix. But in general, you've got about a 48% of residents and 52% visitors. There is a very, very high percentage dependent on private cars. The drop-off rate is 64%. So from South County, we have 64% of the John Wayne passengers who someone is driving, dropping them off at the airport, and driving all the way back to Orange County, or South County. And when they come back, when that visitor comes back, they drive back and get that person again and drive all the way home. So we're generating twice the trips that you would normally expect. In looking at this area of concentration, we felt probably the quickest result would be focusing on resident leisure travelers, okay? Resident business travelers are having their expenses paid for by their company, but resident leisure travelers, those people that are going on vacation, would probably be a safe or a market to focus on where you could market it in a way of you won't have to pay for parking at the airport. And especially maybe initial marketing targets for MetroLink users, people that already know how MetroLink works, maybe even have a pass already. So I'm familiar with MetroLink. If someone says to me, "Hey, you can touch the I Shuttle at the Tustin MetroLink station," I may not know what the I Shuttle is, but I know what the Tustin MetroLink station is. So we're going to suggest that Irvine and OCTA look at marketing first at those MetroLink users and look at cost savings for parking to be able to get that I Shuttle moving forward. The last area we looked at was the Anaheim-Garden Grove Resort area for Disney. This was so very different than I ever expected. In the Anaheim zip code, which is where the actual resort is, you've got 98% of your JWA passengers coming in there are visitors, on vacation or going to a convention in that area. In Garden Grove, it's a little bit less, but not much, it's 86%. And for Garden Grove, the vast majority are visiting this small area here. Garden Grove has taken advantage of the Disney business, and they've put some major hotels and resort-type hotels here. And so what you're having is over a million airport passengers a year coming into a very small area. The good news is it creates some opportunities, not simply for transit, but also for regionalization issues. I expected to see a very high use of rental cars. When I go on vacation with my family, I rent a car because you want to see the area. We had only 22, 23% of these visitors using rental cars. 75% were actually using shared ride taxis, private shuttles, and buses. And as we dug a little bit deeper, what we found is that the Disney Resort has its own transit system, the Anaheim Resort Transit, and it runs throughout the resort area. And so once passengers get to the resort, they're self-contained. All they have to do is get from the airport to the resort. They don't need to rent a car. If they rent a car, they're going to have to pay parking every day, as well as the rentals. And so you do have a very good opportunity of people who are already expecting to get on some type of transit service to get them from the airport into Anaheim. What we also found is that of the people that are taking private shuttles and the express bus, that's about 40%, most of them are taking private shuttles, like Super Shuttle or something like that, rather than using the Disney Express Bus. And as we looked into it, because they go the same route, I didn't understand why we were having that difference. The Disney Express Bus is $15 for a trip to the airport, and Super Shuttle and all the other shuttles are only $10. So there may be an opportunity, again, to work with the bus shuttle, which is going to be able to move more passengers for you, and work on maybe some price differentials so that you can start to maybe move some of those private shuttle operations down a little bit and put more people onto that express bus. Now what we're going to do is go into some of the things that we found from the airport survey that talks about how people choose airports and the issue of regionalization. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jeff Thomas. Jeff is the CEO of Landrum &amp; Brown, an international aviation firm. And we're fortunate, I've worked with Landrum &amp; Brown up and on for the past four years, but they're also now working with John Wayne Airport on the terminal modernization. So they have a very good understanding of John Wayne Airport and how their operations are.
Thank you, Peggy. As we said, this study didn't focus on the regionalization issue, but rather on the local. But in doing the survey, there is some information that falls out of that that I believe shed some light on regionalization and some of the issues there, and I will try to touch on a few of those this afternoon. In Southern California, there are choices of airports. And in terms of the survey responses with JWA passengers, we found that some 31% of those passengers in fact considered another airport in making a choice to use John Wayne. That's significant in that it means that people are open to the idea of using another airport under the right set of circumstances. From an Orange County traveler standpoint, the survey, LAX is the primary alternative to John Wayne, and that's certainly not surprising. LAX has service to many locations that John Wayne doesn't. It has higher frequencies of service to almost all destinations, and it's a large air service, the largest air service engine in the region. We did find that 50% of the passengers that we surveyed had taken one or more trips from other Southern California airports in this year. So what that's saying is the passenger base that's using John Wayne certainly is amenable to using other airports in the region. And in fact, we see regionalization going on in Orange County. There are a number of factors that the survey respondents told us were the driving force in their decision for making their airport choices, and those factors are ones that can be drivers of regionalization solutions. Passengers primarily choose the airport based on its proximity to their local points of origin, and it's more a trail of time than it is a distance issue. But nonetheless, if everything else is equal, a passenger will choose to use the airport that's closest to their point of origin. That's not surprising, it's consistent with surveys of air passengers everywhere in the survey. There's one determinant that has influence in the equation more so than others, and that is price as a modifier of that choice. People have demonstrated, or passengers do demonstrate, that they will go out of their way, choose further or more distant airport if there is a significant savings in airfare. And that's certain passengers, business passengers being less susceptible to that choice than tourist travelers. We did also find that express bus or rail transport has the potential to reduce access travel times to outlying airports and thus to augment the constrained capacity we have at John Wayne. So from a standpoint of regionalization opportunities, we believe there are some short-term strategies, some, primarily targeting changing the airport preferences of some subsegments of the aviation market. The Disney Resort is probably the best example of that. It's a very high concentration of air passengers using John Wayne and other regional airports. There is some opportunity we'd be there, and in some of the North County cities, to change the preference from a John Wayne from an LAX to potentially an Ontario situation, strengthen the market for Ontario, which would help free capacity at John Wayne for other purposes, help free capacity at LAX. In the longer-term sense, there is also a strategy we believe that needs to be examined, and that would be the use of integrated air rail to alter airport access times. If we could make inland airports such as Ontario more accessible to Orange County travelers, therefore, they would have a greater choice of using Ontario. If we can get more passengers using in Ontario and that market grows, then you'll get more service at Ontario and the thing perpetuates itself. But as things now exist, Ontario is a difficult trip for many people in Orange County, and the convenience of making that ground access trip is not there today. And then in the longer term, we also have some opportunities, we believe, to transfer some assured all air demand to some rail solutions in the longer term. We looked at this map before. The important thing here is that John Wayne passenger activity and trip origins are extremely concentrated, and that does create some opportunity for public transportation opportunities, particularly surrounding Anaheim and the Disney Resort area. This slide, rather busy map, I apologize for not having it in the same form, is survey data from a survey done at LAX on Orange County visitor-air travelers. In this particular case, the pattern of LAX air trips for Orange County visitors is very similar to the pattern we saw on the trip concentrations for John Wayne. Again, heavy concentrations of passengers in the South County area, around John Wayne Airport itself, and in the Disney Anaheim area. Interestingly, and indicative of some of the problem you're dealing with here, a greater portion of the air travel demands and trips for Orange County are happening out of LAX than are out of John Wayne. If we had, and I don't have with me today unfortunately, the same picture for Ontario trips by Orange County visitors and residents, you would see a similar pattern to this. And again, there are a significant number of Orange County residents and visitors using air trips from Ontario as opposed to John Wayne. Lastly, when one takes a longer-term view, there are some future opportunities potentially if one begins to examine a high-speed rail network in this region. Connections between airports like Los Angeles International and airports in San Diego with potential airport, the airport in Las Vegas. There are some significant opportunities to begin to move serious numbers of passengers from air transportation to rail. The advantage of that would be, one, to get these passengers and the aircraft associated with these passengers out of the system. If you could take a short-haul trip out of LAX, as an example, and put it on a high-speed rail connection, you could then introduce into LAX a long-term or long-haul service from international destination or transcontinental destination that have more economic benefit. We believe, and these numbers are in the 2003 time frame, they're larger today, that there is something on the order of a million and a half passenger movements that are simply internal to the airports in the Los Angeles region itself. That's trips between John Wayne and LAX where people are flying to LAX to make connections to international activity or long-haul trips. These are trips from Ontario to LAX, there are trips from Burbank to LAX, and these are going on, and we believe these have some potential to be displaced with proper access by some kind of high-speed conveyance in the long term. We know that in San Diego, there are large numbers of passengers who are using LAX, who are using John Wayne, and there's a potential there that's approaching 2 million-plus passengers today, we believe, some of whom could be transferred to rail and free up capacity at San Diego's airport for longer-haul services there. And San Diego has an airport capacity problem. From a regional perspective, the problem you have here is that you have John Wayne, you have aviation demand that's already several times the capacity of that facility. There will be continued pressure as your economy grows and as you go out in time for that facility to want to expand, the pressure would be to raise that cap. And the relief valve that's happening today, and it's happened historically, is LAX. If you look at the future of LAX, we're seeing an airport that's going to itself be increasingly constrained, there are going to be fewer opportunities for Orange County passengers to use air service at LAX 10 years from now than there are today. And therefore, you're going to have continued pressure on John Wayne if some way to move passengers from the coastal area where those concentration demands are to airports that have capacity isn't found.
So to kind of recap or conclude on the regionalization issue, I think that all three of us were actually quite surprised when we got the data from Los Angeles World Airports. And this, and again, we're sorry we couldn't have it in a different format, but they, this is the map that they gave us. But what we discovered is that 6.2 million passengers are coming, flying into LA and then coming, driving to Orange County, coming into Orange County. An additional 4 million Orange County residents are accessing LAX. So we're at 10 million passengers are using LAX, another 10- So we're at 10 million passengers are using LAX, another 10 million annual passengers are using John Wayne Airport, and then we have another million that are going out to Ontario. So once we actually saw the distribution and the rate of usage, we were actually quite surprised. But I was pleasantly surprised when I saw the distribution of the LAX passengers because it is creating some opportunities. You know, the best opportunities that you're going to have for focusing either transit or regionalization are when you have a lot of passengers coming into a very concentrated node. So we have been in discussions with LALA, and hopefully, we'll get some more data from them, but no, we didn't find the magic bullet, but we did find a trail maybe to it. So we're going to end our presentation here and open up to any questions you might have.
Thirty members of the public who would like to address this issue, please come forward to the podium on the right.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Heather Summers, resident of the city of Costa Mesa. I have a couple of questions which are more pointed towards the regionalization issues that we're talking about towards the end of this presentation. Specifically, I was wondering if we are moving towards the airlines being on board as being major stakeholders in the high-speed rail out to McCarran Airport, so that that will alleviate some of the burden on Southern California airports and use of McCarran to bring people back into Southern California? That's one question. And the second question is, is legislation in the works to use airport user dollars for secondary and tertiary transportation connections? As it has been in the past, airport dollars have to be used specifically at the airports, and I'm just wondering if we are potentially going to be able to use those dollars to further our secondary and tertiary transportation access? Thank you.
Unless there's anybody else who will close public comment, and pass it over to Mayor Selleck.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the Newport Council? Councilman Crumey?
Peggy, with the finding that 10 million passengers are going, are you, Orange County passengers are using Los Angeles Airport, does that suggest a transit solution of faster park-and-fly lots where you can park in Orange County and bus to Los Angeles Airport and catch an express bus back to a parking lot in Orange County to increase usage of Los Angeles Airport by Orange County residents?
Possibly. Actually, the way I got connected to this data was through the consultant that is working on the flyaway proposals for Los Angeles World Airports. And I didn't make this connection until about a week ago. So as we exchanged the information, we were both kind of surprised at what we were finding. So we're going to continue those discussions, but yes, I think there may be some opportunities. What we have for the John Wayne data that we don't have for LAX is we've got the raw data in electronic format, so as questions come up, we can cross-tabulate and start to really do an analysis. We don't have that from LALA, though I think they might be open to providing it. So the answer is yes.
Well, certainly some opportunities to pull traffic off of 405. But you also have to recognize the point that I was making earlier, that when you look at LAX as a relief valve for aviation activity here, that increasingly is going to be a relief valve that's more constrained, more congested, and less able to handle those trips.
Any other questions? Councilman Crumey?
This is a bit off the topic of getting everybody to go out to Ontario, but there is one group, as far as the congestion aspect, I was really interested in the employees' issue because that's the only group we have any control over. We don't personally, but the airport does. And so certainly, that's something to work at as far as some policies as these transit methods improve, particularly those nodes where we draw a lot of employees from. So this could be quite a difference in terms of congestion around the airport.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Webb?
I think that it's kind of interesting that Summers, when she asked her question, perhaps that ties in a little bit to Nancy's question. Does that mean that we might be able to work on a mechanism for the airport to help subsidize the employees' costs to encourage their use of that transit facility, utilizing some of the money from the airport to help in these programs to get them more efficient and able to serve the employees?
Okay. Any other comments? For me?
Well, I was just going to say that within the scope of our work, that really wasn't part of it, but I can tell you this, we got not 100 percent cooperation, but 200 percent cooperation from John Wayne Airport management and staff. So they're very interested in looking at problem-solving for their employees as well, and so we've had a number of meetings on that. So, and Courtney Weirchuck is here from John Wayne Airport, so I'm sure she's making note of that.
What are the possibilities of, is it required legislation to allow airports to spend money on improving the transportation to and from airports? Do we have any idea about that?
Yeah, yes, sir. I actually have studied that fairly in-depth. There are some fairly strict regulations on how you can use airport revenue, whether it be PFCs or parking revenue, on transit-related links. And there are a number of airports that have actually built fairly sophisticated links into their airport using passenger facility charges. But there are some key criteria, it must be on airport-owned land or airport right-of-way, it must serve only airport passengers, and there are a number of other issues that have to be met. With those regulations, you had JFK Airport build their air train, if you've ever taken that, from the Long Island Line into JFK Airport, as well as a number of other places. As we began to talk about revenue and how do you build these systems, we got more and more attention from airport managers about transit taking their airport revenue. And so we sat down and said, okay, airports generate a huge amount of revenue. Why is that? It's because their market is different. You have a very high-income market. You have people that are focused on time versus cost. And so when you look at a passenger who's willing to pay a cost to get to the airport in a reliable timeframe and very quickly, then you have a market that you can tap into that you may be able to connect into some public-private partnerships. And a good example of this is the Heathrow Express, which goes from the London Heathrow Airport into downtown London. Public-private partnership, British Airways contributed $500 million to the cost of the total $750 million. In the first six months of operation, it was operating in the black. That's unheard of for a transit project. Last year, it made $16 million profit after it covered its capital expenses as well as its operating costs. So your airport market is very different. 52 percent of our passengers that we surveyed make over $100,000 a year, and 15 percent make over $200,000. Very lucrative market, very different from the commuter transit market.
Any other comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to, in a second, to receive and file the report for Newport Beach.
Second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote there, Lonnie, please?
Thank you, Mayor Selleck. Costa Mesa Council, any comments or questions? Mayor Protown?
Thank you. Just a quick question before I do. I just want to thank everyone from Newport Beach and Costa Mesa for attending today. This is historic, and although we're not going to solve our airport issues today at this one meeting, it certainly is going to send a strong message that we are united in not only keeping John Wayne Airport from expanding, but at all of us looking at all of the potential solutions. So I want to thank everyone for their time today. The only question I had is, Peggy, you had mentioned consolidated shuttle service among the hotels, and that really is a private sector solution, or is part of a solution. It's not going to solve everything, but it is private sector. Has anybody contacted them to see if they are interested in that?
No. Again, within the scope of the work, once we evaluated how people were getting to airports and we saw this discrepancy between the number of people that were coming from hotels and the number of people using hotel shuttles, then we dug a little bit deeper. So we did not look into a particular route. I drew out that route simply so you could see that there was a high concentration of hotels in a very small area. And no, we didn't make contact with the hotels except to ask what kind of hotel shuttle service they offered into John Wayne Airport. And it isn't necessarily, it can be, you know, if you decide you want to do something together, it could be a private type of operation, it could be something through OCTA, but it would take coordination, yeah. And frankly, one of the reasons why we considered it is because this is what the Disney Resort did. They reached a point, and Disney had put into their use agreements with the hotels that they must provide shuttle service into the Disneyland Park, and they had this horrible congestion because there are so many hotels and all these shuttles were coming in, and they finally said, enough, let's consolidate this into our own transit system, and it's worked beautifully.
I don't know if there's a representative from the Chamber of Commerce here today, but perhaps that's something that the chambers of Commerce from various cities can look at, maybe we can follow up on that.
Hotel Conference for Visitors Bureau.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments, and thank Newport Beach for coming here today, and thank you, Ms. Ducey and your team, for the excellent report. It's a lot of great data for us. The, what I, I guess what it shows is that we have some opportunities to relieve the ground transportation congestion, but we don't really know what the opportunities are yet for the air transportation issues. And so that is something that obviously I feel concerned about, and I think unanimously we all are, and hope that you could give us some insight as to what are some of the next steps. We just had a motion to receive and file. What's the next step in this process?
Well, the next step is to finalize the written report. One of the reasons why the report is still in draft form is we wanted to get your feedback. So absolutely, over the next two weeks, we will be finalizing that report, submitting it to city staff for their review, and then it will come to each one of your city councils for approval or comment. But after that, I'm going to turn this over to Jeb Thomas. He understands this regionalization and aviation issue much better than I do. In fact, I'm just a city manager type. But it was so clear to me when we got this passenger data, and I was at that passenger survey every day for those two weeks. I was actually handing out surveys, talking to people, and the amount of information I got was just tremendous. And once we actually started to cross-tabulate things, and I would call Landor LeBrun and say, can you tell me what visitors are doing in Laguna Niguel? It was just tremendous. And so we started to open up these incredible opportunities because we were able to truly take that data and cross-tabulate. And so we've talked about a real critical step would be, can we get a hold of the LALA survey data and do the same type of analysis, as well as facilitate, help facilitate a more recent survey out of Ontario? The last survey was 2001. But I'm going to also turn it over to Jeb because he understands much better than I do. Which one?
From a technical standpoint, probably the logical next step in this kind of a process of analysis would be to integrate a database that includes the findings here for John Wayne with the findings from LAX, and potentially with findings from Ontario in terms of their surveys. And then to marry that data with demographic information from all those zip codes so that you could build a base from which you could begin a logical aviation forecasting process for the future. So you would get an accurate picture of what Orange County's air travelers look like today, and then a basis using economic forecasting techniques to project that into the future. That would then tell you what the problem is going to look like as you move out 20 years into the future. It's going to tell you the level of pressure you're going to have in this county for need for aviation facilities, and it's going to then set the framework to try to devise some solutions to move some of this passenger activity to outlying airports, if that's in fact possible.
So how do we go about moving in that next direction?
It's, I believe there are a number of ways to do it. Basically, one has to find a funding source to pay for the analysis. That could be done regionally, by an organization, by some sort of regional planning agency, where you would actually do this for every county in the entire region. Or you can do it as an Orange County analysis and fund that through whatever local sources make the most sense for funding that sort of transportation analysis. I'm not sure, in this case, what's the best course of action, although I do believe it's, this type of information is very valuable and understand this problem across the entirety of all the counties in this region, in all of Southern California. You have to understand where these passengers are before you can devise a system that serves them in some way other than everybody trying to go to the airport next door. But there's going to be enormous pressure for people to go to that airport next door from those blue zones on that map, unless there's some way to move those people. And those people are not going to relocate their homes from the beach and from the areas they're living in or the offices they're occupying to inland locations. It's just not going to happen. The preference is going to be to live in those attractive areas.
If I could just add a little bit more to this. The opportunity we have is that Los Angeles World Airports has gathered the data in raw form and done a very, very good passenger survey, 25,000 passengers.
For LAX?
For LAX.
Who's current?
And it's current. It's within the past year. So if you want specifics, the next step would be, we wouldn't have to do a passenger survey for LAX. What we would, the next step would be to take that data and start to analyze it in a way that makes sense for regionalization, not for customer satisfaction, which is what airports do these surveys for. So there's some opportunities there. Where the opportunities are in terms of the passenger market, I don't know, but I was very excited when I saw this Disneyland node, which is about five square miles, where you not only have a million passengers coming in from John Wayne Airport, but you have three or four million coming in from LAX. I mean, it's just this wonderful icy opportunity. And so you look at what Los Angeles World Airports did, which was to put flights out of Palmdale and tuck down some United flights and say, okay, here are the flights, the passengers will come, and they didn't. United just canceled their flights into Palmdale. But if you know where your passengers are and what they want, those passengers don't necessarily want to fly into LAX or John Wayne. What they want is to get into Disneyland. And so if you can provide some incentives to those passengers, whether, when I vacationed this year, I was offered a rebate on my air ticket if I went into a certain airport. So there's incentives that you can, you can offer that are very different. But our focus again is, know your market, know what's going to motivate that market, and then don't match your passenger to the mode, match your mode to the passenger, to what the passenger needs.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes, Member Leece.
Thank you. Along those lines, could you just remind us about the extent of the Go Local program? In other words, is it just the report, or are you going to be going on from there? Are we going to get, need to look at more funding to pursue other options?
Our scope of work for the Go Local was to look at the transit connections and do ridership estimates and cost analysis, and that is strictly what the Go Local scope of work was for.
Okay, thank you.
Member Leece. Member Foley?
Mr. Rutter, if we wanted to take the next step in terms of implementation, what would be the process?
Councilmember Foley, I think that is really what the next item is on your agenda in terms of the MOU, establishing the framework to take next steps. I think what Ms. Ducey was saying is that under the OCTA program, while there is-
I think what Ms. Ducey was saying is that under the OCTA program, while there is a second step to the Go Local process, that is to refine physical project implementation, such as the Santa Ana-Garden Grove transit link that they're looking at and other measures. But the next step really would be the MOU and then developing specific strategies from there.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. I just had a couple of questions if the rest of the council is finished. The basis of this was to figure out how to get people to rail. And I think our perspective was to find ways to get people on rail and out of the Orange County area and onto flights from other airports. So from that perspective, I would support the short haul idea for the high-speed rail. Unfortunately, we don't have that on the ground at this point, so it's maybe a pipe dream. There was something that came out of this that isn't rail-related, but I think there's an opportunity. If I understood the presentation, only 2% of the employees indicated that they would be availing themselves of the BRT. Was that correct?
That's, that was what we considered a low case.
Okay.
So given the coverage, which it covers geographically about 40% of the employees, but as a low case, we said that penetration would be about 2% of that area. But then on the high side, we say it could get up as high as 10%. But certainly, when you look at the alignment of the BRT that's proposed, very well aligned with the costers of the employees within the county. So like Peggy said, that's certainly, now that we've processed this data and presented it, that's an opportunity to basically try and take that ridership by targeting those areas to increase ridership of when that, when that system comes into place.
I think that we may be able to, I don't know what the vehicles are from a financial standpoint, but I worked in downtown LA many years ago, and my employee paid half of my transit pass, and that was a good enticement to get me out of my car and onto a rapid bus. And so I think that I would, I would suggest that we look at whatever mechanisms there are for the airport to maybe subsidize those transit passes. There may need to be some park-and-ride lots that align with the BRT. And so I'm not sure, since this really isn't a rail-related solution, is there any mechanism to push this forward? Or will this information simply be rolled over to OCTA for their consideration?
But I think what I heard you ask in the beginning was, was the concern is using rail to move passengers to outlying airports.
That was, well, certainly, I think that's something that we would all like to see happen.
So the regulations of Go Local required that we only looked at local transportation. We could not look at regional, and that's why we really focused on this local transit connection. And in looking at a bus shuttle, the I Shuttle and BRT, and a rail, maybe a light rail extension from MetroLink into John Wayne Airport, passengers choose light rail into airports when, in fact, they can get to the airport faster than by taking roads. We actually are moving passengers pretty well throughout Orange County. So we didn't see that the expense of a rail link was warranted, given what we would expect in terms of ridership. So one of the questions was asked, "What's the next step?" A key component of looking at using outlying airports to move passengers to is ground transportation. I used to fly my college daughter into Ontario the first couple of years of college because I could get fares usually $50 or $75 less, but now with the price of gas, it eats up that cost savings. And so a critical component will be, not simply how do you entice passengers to use outlying airports, but then how do you make it financially beneficial for them?
Bus, rapid, you know.
Bus, bus.
Bus, bus, things like that. But I don't see this discussion leading to those solutions, and those are things that I think, well, I guess Mr. Rutter made the point. Those are discussions that we will have to pursue collectively here. One question that I have is, we see the Anaheim area as being a great potential in terms of moving people to and from and gaining some efficiencies there. Concern that I have is that, has anybody looked at whether or not this, if we provide efficient, cost-effective, fast transportation from John Wayne to the Anaheim area, is that going to end up increasing pressure on John Wayne? Which is not what, I don't think that's the goal of anybody at this table.
There were a number of times when I met with the Aviation Committee with Newport Beach, as well as talked to residents from both your cities, and that was a key concern. If you have a transit link into the airport, is it going to attract people to John Wayne versus move them out to Ontario? So that was, that was a critical issue we kept in mind as we went through our stakeholder dialogue. But I do want Mr. Thomas to address it kind of from the aviation perspective, so.
What I was, I believe, suggesting was a little different, and that was that the linkage that should be explored potentially from an Orange County standpoint would be a linkage between that resort area and Ontario Airport. So that you could begin to shift trips from John Wayne to Disney, over to Ontario to Disney, so we could shift from a regional standpoint, trips from LAX that are going to Disney over to Ontario to Disney. And that would build the base of traffic at Ontario, would allow more flight service at Ontario, and it would reduce certainly bus traffic on your local roadways, and it would reduce, it would free up capacity at John Wayne to serve local residents and business travelers to, to the county as well. From an LAX standpoint, there's a huge number of passengers flowing from that facility across our roads to get to Disney, and that, there is some potential for traffic relief. And while we're struggling with how do they do something with Ontario, here's a potential opportunity, we believe, to, to solve a couple of problems.
When I first was involved in doing some consulting work on aviation, I left my position with Newport Beach and became the Executive Director of the Orange County Regional Airport Authority. And we came up with this concept of an airport without runways in Anaheim, where you would create a remote airport terminal where you could do everything that you'd need to do in an airport, check your bags, get your tickets, get your boarding passes. And instead of stepping onto a plane, you'd step onto a high-speed rail link in this seamless travel path. And they've done this at other airports, and it works beautifully, especially at Frankfurt. So to have a remote airport terminal that's not directly connected to John Wayne but operates, again, what you end up having is a second airport in Orange County, you just have your runways in a different place.
Maybe rebranding Ontario as Disney Airport would help, too.
It is a marketing solution, yes.
Oh, absolutely. And private-public partnership. One last question, and then we'll move this on to the next item. It appears that we have a significant amount of passenger travel coming from the immediate vicinity, Costa Mesa, Newport. I know that OCTA for elderly and disabled, they have on-call shuttles, and I'm wondering if perhaps that's a model that anybody's considered, because these are such short trips. Now, usually I'll call a cab if I need to get out there and go that route, but if OCTA wants to have some involvement, that might be something else that they would, would look into. Counsel, unless there are any other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and make a motion to Rosie.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Okay. Call for a question?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much for your report. I gather now that our city managers are going to double-team us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor's and city councils. I'm going to provide a little overview, and this is mainly from Newport Beach's perspective. Let me start out by saying that the residents of our respective cities have a long history with an airport in Orange County, and that relationship was actually a good relationship up until the early 1980s, when that relationship took a drastic detour because the county, county owns the airport, proposed to change John Wayne from a private airport to an airport that would serve large, noisy, commercial aircraft. And proceeding with that project, an EIR was produced, and the residents in Newport Beach in particular were very upset about that whole process. And in looking at the EIR, there were three groups that felt like the EIR was very inadequate to address what they saw the potential impacts of such a change to an airport and enlarging it to such an extent. And those groups were Stop Polluting Our Newport, we call it SPAWN, AWG, the Airport Working Group, and the City of Newport Beach. And they came together and filed a lawsuit against the county to say that the EIR document was inadequate. A lot of debate went back and forth, and rather than face a court date, the four parties, because the county was the, the fourth party, got together and worked out a settlement agreement in 1985. That settlement agreement was good for 20 years. And that settlement agreement was rather historic in that it had been almost never done throughout the, the country. What it did was to establish the number of large, commercial, noisy aircraft that could use John Wayne on a daily basis, place a limitation of 8.5 million passengers a year that could use the airport. It established some pretty strong noise measures and noise monitoring to make sure that enforcement took place. And there was even a provision that limited the square-footed space for terminals at 337,000 square feet. So around 2000, we recognized certainly that this was a 20-year agreement and it would expire in 2005. So we started talking with the county about an extension of that agreement. Let me back up one, one step here. The agreement took effect in 1985, and the Federal Aviation Administration was very concerned about this agreement and what might be a multiplication of such agreements throughout the country in communities that have airports and are very concerned about the negative impacts of those airports. Therefore, it got Congress to pass what is legislation is called ANCA, the Airport Noise and Limitation Act, in the early 1990s. And that basically prohibited other communities from doing what the 1985 settlement agreement did. So in the early 2000, we started some negotiations with the county because our theory was that our '85 agreement was grandfathered, and we would approach it on that basis, approach the negotiations with that basis, and when the negotiations were fruitful, all four parties to the 1985 agreement did sign that agreement. We actually got a letter from the FAA, said that they recognized that our agreement was still valid, that it was grandfathered under the ANCA legislation and was still good. And that was a very important letter to us, to recognize that our settlement agreement could go on as long as we could negotiate within certain boundaries. The agreement in 2003 extends until December the 31st of 2015. And what it did was, it made some increases in the number of passengers that could use John Wayne from 8.5 to now 10.3, and after 210, it would go to 10.8. It increased the number of large, commercial, daily jet flights from 78 to 85. And it incorporated the county's noise ordinance, which was a curfew ordinance, which was not a part of the 1985 settlement agreement. We actually incorporated it into the settlement agreement so that we would not be dependent on just the County Board of Supervisors extending that noise ordinance. We also allowed the number of gates to change from 12 to 20. So like I said, that settlement agreement is good until the end of 2015. And I think as we've all seen with the El Toro Airport issue, that this issue is something that a number of people in a number of communities are interested in. And the City of Costa Mesa, and the cities of Anaheim and Tustin and Santa Ana and Orange have been very helpful to us in talking to the Board of Supervisors and lobbying for that agreement that took place in 2003. So I'm going to turn it over at this point to Alan and let him pick up from here and talk about the MOU and some other issues.
Thank you, Homer. I think as we've heard today with the presentation, that the challenges facing having JWA in our midst are not going to be resolved by moving all the trips off to another airport. They are not likely going to be resolved solely by changes in aircraft technology or changes in monitoring techniques or changes in even the airline industry globally, even though as we look at the events of the past year, how those have already affected the operation of John Wayne in terms of the numbers of flights and passengers. But it's going to involve all of those. It's going to be elements of each of those assembled together that will allow us to keep John Wayne Airport constrained and yet still meet some of the key challenges facing this county. It won't be any one piece, it's going to be the combination of those. And a big part of what we're talking about today is setting forth a process so that we can start pulling all of those pieces together. Because some of those will be done at the local level, some will be done at the county level, and certainly a lot of it's going to be done back in Washington, DC, as scary as that may be to all of us. But the fact of the matter is, I'm sorry, in light of this week's events, I just couldn't leave that, I couldn't leave it alone. My, I know, my council knows, I just can't keep it straight all the time. But it is going to involve all of those elements. And what we're talking about today with the memorandum of understanding is creating that foundation that allows us to engage those issues at all of those different levels. But this really isn't the first occasion when we've done that. As Homer mentioned, we were able, back in '06, '07, to pull the corridor cities together to get all of those cities to support a unified statement of principles. The City of Newport Beach has adopted those, as has the City of Costa Mesa, along with all of the other corridor cities. Getting all of those bodies focused and addressing a set of principles was a significant accomplishment because it sends a message, I think most importantly, to the County of Orange as operator of the airport, that there is more than just Newport Beach or just Costa Mesa concerned about the operation of this facility, that it is widespread. We talked today about the Go Local application and working towards development of data to help us look at exporting some of those flights elsewhere. So we have already accomplished some things together. The MOU, and I'm not going to go through it in any great detail, I'd rather be responsive to your questions about that, but the MOU basically lays foundation for working together prospectively. I think the "whereas's" are pretty generic, and as I've said, if they're not a bit rose-colored, but that's what "whereas's" are, a statement of what we would like to see. If, and skipping forward a little bit, any MOU, if you note on page three the goal statements, if those look familiar to you, and for the benefit of the Costa Mesa City Council, we put out for you this resolution, the pink sheet, those goal statements are all-inclusive of the statement, of statement and resolution that all the corridor cities adopted almost two years ago. It talks about opposition of expansion of John Wayne, opposition to adding a second runway, oppose any attempt by outside entities to assume operation of the airport. So those goals- So those goals, if they look familiar, it's because you've already seen them and acted on them before. I should note, there are a couple of additional items in those goals. Among those, Goal A, which says, no adverse impacts on quality of life in our respective communities. Goal D, preservation of the settlement agreement. And Goal E, which is the importance of communications between our communities and with the constituencies that we serve. Balance of the goal statements on page three are identical to those which you have already seen and acted on before. The objectives on page two, again, without going through a great deal of detail, Objective One, simply, and I have to thank the city of Newport Beach for your willingness to allow us to sit, as you have the last few months, with the Aviation Committee, not only sit and attend, but under this arrangement, allow us to actually be part of that. We thank you for your, or for the recommendation, we thank Homer for recommending that we be permitted that. There are some detailed items to be addressed, whether we do that today or subsequently, in terms of how that, what that composition is and how those appointments are made. I think the operative point is that Costa Mesa would become part of that team effort. Objective number two, which I think is extremely important, talks about exchange of information, public forums, and with basically this group meeting on an annual basis. One of the things that I think is critical is the recognition that the issues involving John Wayne Airport are here for the long term. They're here longer than probably all of your terms. I think it's safe to say it'll be here, the issues will be here even longer than Homer and I, if that's possible. That underscores the importance of continuity, of continuity of effort and communication and carrying this over for the long term. Can't be the quick fix, the, we found the solution, it's going to be something that we have to work on long term. And I think the importance of having these annual meetings will help institutionalize that for both communities, hopefully broaden that beyond those two groups. Objective three talks about specific efforts, really more to the staff level, but I think it goes all the way from local actions to federal actions. We've had the good pleasure of working with your consultant, Tom Edwards, already on some federal rulemaking actions where we've been able to work with Tom and help add our support and work on those, and I think that's an effort that should be continued and expanded. Objective four talks about bringing in the corridor cities, hopefully under the same kind of an agreement as our two cities are considering today. Objective five, keeping the county close, keeping the county next to us, keeping the county as part of this process. I want to echo a comment that both Peggy and Homer have made before. We've just had outstanding cooperation from Alan Murphy and his staff, they've been very forthcoming in providing information to us, very, very cooperative. I think that's something we need to build on, I think it's something that U.S. elected officials have and will continue to build on, not only the second district supervisor, but the other members of the Board of Supervisors as well. That is extremely key, it's an important role for U.S. elected officials, but keeping the county very, very close to this process. And Objective six is creating the expectation that we're all in this together, and that means not only in it together in a partnership, but partnerships cost money. And I'm going to make a statement here that I hope I don't regret, but it's time for the rest of us to start taking a little bit of the financial load off Newport Beach. This has been Newport's kind of exclusive responsibility, and has stepped up to the plate and done a good job. But I think because the impacts involve all of us, it's time for the rest of us to step up and be true partners, and true partners means assuming some of the costs and liabilities of that effort. And this MOU is intended to set that forth as an objective and something we want to work towards. With that, that concludes my summary of the MOU, and I think we're both here and available to answer any questions any of the council members may have.
You want to go first, Mayor Sella?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from my counsel? Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, I have a quick comment. Looking at the objectives on page two, I'm particularly interested in Objective number four, where we're going to use this MOU to establish relationships with the other cities of the county. You know, the corridor cities are the easy cities, obviously, they're kind of in the same boat we are, the planes fly over their head, I imagine they'll be more than happy to join us. I think our focus, though, really needs to be on the cities that have not joined us in the past, who fought at the El Toro Airport at the time, and, you know, that battle's been lost, and it's over, and there's no going back. But certainly, we need to energize the other cities in the county, particularly the South County cities, to assist us in this, because I think only then will we have a unified presence with the county. I mean, we have one supervisor, you know, Morlock represents our respective cities, and I imagine, you know, there's probably another supervisor that covers most of these other cities, but certainly, other South County cities, North County cities have other supervisors whose interests may not always align with us. So I think the real work needs to be done with those cities and bringing them on board in this type of a cooperative relationship. So that would be my hope, that as we move forward, we'll emphasize Objective number four.
Councilman Curry.
Thank you, and I'd like to say thank you to our friends and colleagues on the Costa Mesa City Council for your hospitality and hosting this meeting today, we appreciate it, and appreciate your partnership in this effort. There can be no doubt that the road to a fair and renewed settlement agreement begins not with shrillness or belligerence, it begins with forging a coalition among neighbors and communities throughout Orange County. And I think this MOU that has been worked out is a perfect example of how that process can begin, and where it can take us, and as Councilman Rosansky suggests, how we can bring other communities into the fight with us. It is the basis for working with the county, with both our supervisor, and with, as Steve suggests, building coalitions with other cities throughout the county, so that when we discuss this and negotiate with the FAA, we're negotiating from a position of unity on behalf of all the residents of Orange County, who all are concerned about the quality of life impacts of John Wayne Airport. I think that's what sits the table for us to ensure that those negotiations are indeed successful, and indeed protect the quality of life of the residents in both Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, and also throughout Orange County. Al, and I particularly want to thank you for your comments about sharing the funding load. And, you know, one of the things, one of the things in public life that's been said
Move to adopt.
Is, second, is that it's difficult to explain to people sometimes the differences between costs and investments. And I think certainly, one of the best investments that we can make for preserving our neighborhoods, preserving our communities, is in our continued fight to ensure that the settlement agreement continues, and that it continues on terms that protect our neighborhoods and our residents. So we welcome Costa Mesa as a full and complete partner, and we thank you for the support that your counsel has expressed, and together, our two communities, as we forge with other partners, I think will ultimately be very successful in our goals to extend the settlement agreements.
Councilman Hen.
I'd like to add my thanks to the city of Costa Mesa for being such great hosts here for this meeting, and I'm in very strong support of this MOU and our joint working efforts here towards solving the problems associated with the airport. I'm also hopeful that, beyond that, this will serve as a template for us to work together in other ways on other issues, because we have problems that are joint between our two cities, and I'm sure it can be better solved with a good spirit of cooperation across a range of issues.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to make one comment on the Goals, number C, Goal Number C. I'm somewhat neophyte at these airport issues, I've only been on the city's Aviation Committee for just about a year now, but one of the things that I think that I've learned during that period of time is that if we are going to minimize the impact of commercial aviation on our cities at John Wayne Airport, that it's really imperative that we preserve the general aviation operations at the airport. And as we look through all these goals and the things that we're going to be doing, I think that we should continue to be mindful of that, that general aviation, from that standpoint, is our friend, and that the preservation and enhancement of general aviation is certainly going to help us achieve our goals. And, sure, the only comment I have on the agreement, I think this is a monumental day that we're going to approve this, I look forward to working with the city of Costa Mesa on these issues. I welcome you, in whatever format that we decide that you participate with us, as full partners in our Aviation Committee, I think we can do much more together as a team than working individually, and I look forward to good things coming from this agreement. With that, I would entertain a motion in a second to approve the agreement.
So moved. Second?
Oh, we can do public comments first, okay, we'll hold up on that.
We'll take council comments, but basically, public comments. Costa Mesa Council, comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Just two quick suggested, potential changes or comments. Looking at the first page, the fourth whereas, third line from the bottom, I understand the intent of this, but I want to make sure we're clear on it. It mentions that we're going to work with various groups, supervisors, both state and federal agencies and supervisors, then it mentions, to a lesser extent, other local, state, federal representatives, and of course, members of the public and so forth. But where it mentions "to a lesser extent," I would just like to take that out, I think everyone is important in this process, and I understand the way it's worded, maybe I'm reading into it too much, but I would just like to take out those words to a lesser extent. And on page three, under the Goals, Goal that's at the bottom, Letter J, in reading this a little more carefully, I think we're suggesting that we actively support the development and implementation of proposals, and not necessarily specific things that we may or may not be going forward with. I was thinking about changing the word "support" to "explore," to actively explore development and implementation of proposals, but the more I think about it, if we're just simply looking at proposals, my point is, I don't want to lock us into something and saying, by saying that we're definitely going to go forward with something specific until we have something specific before us, but I certainly want to keep all options on the table. So I'll just throw that out there. Thank you.
Member Foley.
Thank you. And again, thank you, city of Newport Beach, and the council members for participating here with us today, and I agree with all the comments that everyone has made. Clearly, we have greater power in numbers, we have greater ability when we work together, and I think that this is a particularly important issue to probably all residents in Orange County. So working with those other cities who we have seen were able to gather a large grassroots effort will definitely benefit us, and I would encourage us to move beyond the corridor cities, as Mr. Rosansky mentioned, and pull in some of those other cities in South County and North County areas. So I support this wholeheartedly, and I want to take a moment to also thank Air Fair is here, and AWG, for all of their efforts that they have pushed for in the past couple years to really get us all together here today. So I think we have something good happening here, and I look forward to the partnership.
Member Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I ditto everything. One of the things I like in the resolution is that it really calls out the opinions and concerns of Orange County residents and business owners, and that's in the fourth whereas, but also on the objectives for number two, that the involvement of community groups within the cities. And as a former trustee with the Newport Mesa Unified School District, I realize the value of our working together for the benefit of our children that are in the district, the school district that we share, particularly those children who go to school in the flight patterns right now, for example, East Bluff Mariners, the fallout from the debris, the noise, the effect of noise on learning. And I want to see us continue to work with the Newport Mesa School District officials so that we can even enlarge our base. The other thing is, in talking about all the people that come to the airport, perhaps we could have a shuttle so that we can get some of those retail dollars and just go back and forth from South Coast Plaza to Fashion Island, and go back and forth, back and forth, and so they can't go anywhere else, but they have to spend their retail dollars, and our cities will hold them captive. And because both of those shopping centers are gems that I know we're equally proud of. So I appreciate Mr. Edwards' finesse here in articulation and writing this MOU, and I think it's got substance, it's not just a bunch of hot air, and it's going to take us, like both of our city managers have alluded to, far beyond our life on a city council, so that the next generation will be able to take up the flag and make those important decisions. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Member Lee, are you suggesting that we rebrand South Coast Plaza and Fashion Island as Disney East and West?
Whatever it takes to get more money into our...
Mayor Protem has another comment.
Thank you. Mr. Roder or Mr. Bluebough, members of the Newport Beach City Council, did you have any concerns or thoughts on the two comments I made on removing the words "to a lesser extent," and then also potential changes to Item J under Goals?
Mr. Roder?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, we have no objections, concerns whatsoever with the change under the fourth whereas. We think the paragraph stands on its own with or without that, so that would not be an issue. In terms of Item J, I believe, the intent was not to limit that simply to one mode. Keep in mind, one of the things that we're trying to move forward on, and with no disrespect to the presentation, is to do a little less study and a little bit more doing. So that was kind of incumbent on it, and if you want to make a change in this, we have a problem, but we want to focus on doing as opposed to studying to the extent we can.
I think it was also our intent that, as staff, we certainly wouldn't be going out and supporting, representing our communities, you know, in Ontario, or Long Beach, or any place else, unless the council was aware of what those projects would be, and we made sure that it was in line with the policies that are in this MOU. So I don't think it's a blanket statement in terms of actively support, I think some steps would need to be taken in order for that to be enacted like that.
Okay.
And if I may just finish, keeping in mind that this agreement will evolve and change over time, so if you find yourself a year from now kind of going, boy, you know, we should be looking at watercraft, not rail, you can make that change at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Roder, for that clarification. And being the last one to speak, of course, just about everything's been said, what I'd like to ask Mr. Roder, or Mr. Roder, is, my understanding is that Newport Beach has a spheres agreement, which, to some degree, constrains the footprint of JWA as it relates to the Newport Beach boundaries. Do we have anything like that in Costa Mesa, and if not, I think would like to suggest that would be one of the first things we look into trying to achieve.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have a similar arrangement. I would suggest that that's something for us to both discuss with Newport Beach, as well as bring back to us the city council, talk about the elements of that, in particular, what under state law will allow... what under state law will allow us that process, and, and what we may be precluded from.
If we can drive a stake in the ground and keep them from moving to the west, I think that would be a, a good move. Another comment was made today, I spoke with Melinda Seeley from Airfare, and she mentioned that in, under general aviation, she's aware of a case in an airport in Florida, where the general aviation users have agreed to a voluntary curfew, and I'd like us to perhaps explore the possibility of a similar type of arrangement at John Wayne Airport. I did also receive an email today from Nancy Elston, also of Airfare, and she was concerned with part of our background report, and I understand her concern. We used the word modest in terms of the growth at the airport, and the concern was that if, well, if this was modest, then what are we complaining about? And in fact, there was a significant growth that occurred under the renegotiation of the settlement. I wanted to ask if that has any bearing on any future positions that our cities might take. I know it's not part of our resolution, but as part of the staff report, does this give us, put us in any legal positions, and maybe Mr. Potter would be the one to ask?
I'm sorry. I missed the whole question.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to respond to the question while Mr. Potter regroups. That is, the, the statement in the staff report is a subjective statement, just as if we said it increased massively. And as part of the staff report, we don't believe it has any legal substance to it in regards to the MOU before you.
Okay, thank you.
Now that I've heard the question, I, I concur.
Mr. Mayor, though, may I amplify on that, because I, I think there's a basic issue here that certainly our study has been dealing with, and some people see the settlement agreement in terms of, well, if you have four signatories to the settlement agreement, the county AWG spawned in the city, why can't you just agree among yourselves that there isn't going to be any more increase in the number of passengers, the number of the planes? It sounds very simple. You have an agreement, all of the people can agree, but it, it is more complicated than that, because the agreement is among those four parties, but there are two parties who aren't parties to the agreement, that are very, very influential. And those parties are the airline industry, who are here to make a profit and here to operate, and if they are constrained to such an, an extent that they feel like they can't grow, or they can't make a profit, they're going to rattle the cage of the FAA, and the FAA is going to take a look and say, this isn't good for interstate commerce, we don't think it is in the, in the feeling of the initial settlement agreement. And our city took the position that we had to allow some growth, so that the settlement agreement would be grandfathered, because if we did not allow growth, and there was running a strong risk that the FAA would say, you are constraining, you allowed growth over a 20-year period, and, and to say that that is going to continue on until infinity just really does not work for a populated area like Orange County. So that is a very careful negotiation, and what is the right number, what is the right number as far as passengers, what was the right number as far as large aircraft, and, you know, it can be debated what that number should be. But we wanted to, in, in 2003, make sure that we got a letter from the FAA saying that you are expanding, you aren't freezing what is happening at John Wayne, and we will recognize the grandfather status of that settlement agreement. That was huge for us, and I think huge for you, and, and everyone who is interested. So those are the kinds of things that need to be taken into consideration, and as we've seen just in the last year, what has happened with the airline industry, I mean, there is the cost of fuel, we talk about moving passengers, you know, to outlying airports, and we heard yesterday at the Citizen Aviation Committee that Ontario passenger service is down 30 percent. Well, we can try and figure out how to move those passengers to Ontario, but is there going to be anybody there to service them once they get there? So there are a lot of complicated, you know, parts to the formula that is going to lead to success, and it is a long-term issue that needs to be expressed that way, because we can't say, well, Ontario's 30 percent down, and we're never going to move those passengers, because it's going to take a long time in order to work out the details to where that might be viable. But I'm sorry, I'm not preaching to the choir, but I think it's an opportunity to do maybe a little education to some people who might be watching, that it isn't as simple as a four-party agreement, and that's it, and it's whatever you agree to, because there are other factors and other players that can have a major impact on whether this agreement continues or not.
Certainly, and thank you for that clarification, City Manager Bloudow. That, the rationale is perfectly logical, so I understand that. With that, unless Costa Mesa Council has any other questions or comments, we will go to public comment. I have cards from Jim Fitzpatrick and Nancy Elston. Anybody who'd like to speak, please go to the podium on the right.
I'm Nancy Elston, Newport Beach, and I did send that memo today to our President, Melinda Seeley, about Airfare's problem with the word modest increase. And I understand where Homer's coming from, I understand delicate negotiations, but if we, I just like that word modest taken out. You know, last night, when I went to bed at midnight, I had a modest decrease in one of my mutual funds. Now Hank Paulson would call that a modest decrease, but at my house, it was significant. So it's all in the perspective of different, and I understand Homer's position, I really do. I just think modest is the wrong word, maybe that's because I taught writing and composition and those things for so long. And I think that when you have a 29 percent increase, that you need to just say, we've had an increase, it hasn't been modest. Otherwise, the opposition, the people who are now rattling all the drums, beating the drums to increase passenger levels at JWA, will look, they've already said this, well, you've just had a modi, you've had this really small increase, and it really didn't make any difference in the noise level. Well, if you live under the flight path, as you do in east side Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, every one of those planes makes a difference. So it's not that I disagree with my city manager. I, in fact, I think he's been pretty great about all of this. However, I just hate that word modest, because I just think it should be struck, okay, from the background. I, I also want to say, on a more positive note, how happy Airfare is to have this memorandum, and to have two cities in which most of our members live. We have some members in some other cities in Orange County, but most of our members live in Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. And quite frankly, Airfare is just ecstatic. We had worked somewhat with Peggy Ducey, and we have met with most of you, who are officials, and we are just delighted with it. I agree with Manager Roder, City Manager Roder, this has to be a multi-prong attack, and we have to find ways to do this on other, on several different levels. And if you listen to Jeff, whom I've heard before at a major conference for air rail, you know, about the only bright spot I see in this right now, other than us just holding firm, is at a rail from Anaheim to Ontario. And some of us, especially Jeannie and I, have tried that, you know, it just stops out there, and you can't get from the rail to the airport. You're missing about a few miles, and you have to take a little shuttle. So, you know, that, in a, in a, in a state that is one of the, has one of the richest gross national products in the world, surely California, Southern California, can figure out how to take care of that little gap. Anyway, those are just a few thoughts from Airfare, and we are just delighted that this meeting came about. We just think that this is one of the keys to us, at, at least, at the very minimum, putting up a united front about the next expansion at John Wayne. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Jim Fitzpatrick. I'm a former eight-year resident of the city in Newport Beach. Last five years, I've lived in the great city of Costa Mesa over on the east side. I don't need a watch to tell you it's seven o'clock in the morning, as the planes are flying overhead. And this whole go local thing, I really hope that, that this rail and transit does get built, because I grew up in Boston, I lived in Tokyo, I've worked extensively in San Francisco, and I just hope I get the opportunity to take my kids, like my dad did, into the baseball game, and watch the Red Sox beat the Angels. But I just want to also say thank you to the, to the residents from both of the cities that, the residents of Costa Mesa look forward to working with you, and I guess, to a lesser extent, some of the council members. The, you know, two reasons why these, these two cities should be working together. One is, eight years ago, you didn't do it, and look where we're at in El Toro. Right, look, this meeting didn't have to take place if our councils had worked together, maybe. On the other end, you know, our cities are already working together. We have a light over at Irvine to allow the pedestrians to safely cross, and thank you for that, and thank you for the two cities to work together to get that done. The residents, we're already working together. I'm already playing soccer, my kids with the, the kids from, from Newport Beach, we're going to the same schools. So we already have a history of working together, and I hope this is the first of, of many examples where our two cities can work together. We have the SR-55 project, we have Banning Ranch to deal with, we have a lot of things on the table that we have to work together. So I just wanted to say thank you to council members, thank you to the residents. This is the first of many. Good luck, and let's keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Costa Mesa, do we have a motion? Since we have changes on the table, I think we should move before Newport-
I'll, I'll move approval, with the only change is to remove the words "to a lesser extent" from the fourth whereas.
I'll second that. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Bloudow and I have discussed this extensively, and we can certainly support expunging the word modest from this report and for all time, and from the public record, if, if that would make you, as elected officials in public, more comfortable.
So moved is part of my motion.
Although when my wife says that she had a modest weight gain, I always just say yes, and don't make a big thing out of it.
Be careful!
No, actually, it's when I say that, and she-
You don't have cable, I hope.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, in concerns with the vice mayor's, to a lesser extent, I was wondering whether that intent would be under objectives number three. It has the same language, and whether his intention in removing-
That is where-
Whereas, that would also be removed from that language as well.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Yes, it would be.
Under objective three, that's the same wording, under objectives, item three.
Trust that redeems me from missing the first question.
Yes.
The second will agree. Call for the question?
Aye.
All in favor?
That motion carries 4 to 0, with Councilmember Dixon absent.
Okay, I entertain a motion from the Newport Beach City Council to approve the MOU as amended by Costa Mesa and the modification to the staff report.
I'd like to make that motion.
Back in.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
For some reason, I have public comments on here again. Mr. Roder?
On agenda items.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on items that are not on today's agenda? If so, please come up to the podium. Seeing no one, I'll close public comments. Are there any further council member comments?
On my side of the table?
None.
Newport Beach, any further comments?
None. With that, we will adjourn to our annual meeting sometime next year.